Well, it's now six o'clock. I would like to call the September 10th meeting of the County Board Order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. One of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The roll call shows two supervisors absent. Item four is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
More moves?
Wait a little second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion questions? Okay, if none, when we are ready up there, you can green button indicate approval. Okay, can release. Okay, agenda unanimously approved. Item five, members of public wishing to be heard. We have, we have none. Item six is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thoughts will move to consent.
Okay. Okay, we motion a second to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion, any questions? Next meeting of October 8th. Okay, more discussion, we will take the vote to approve. Okay, we have supervisor Henick, just one less taking, can release. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Item seven, reports. A, the county administrator review and update. There's none. Item B, department reports, HR update on employee engagement and employee surveys. Tony?
All right, good evening. This is the second of three presentations for County Board orientation, and this one is going to be about employee engagement and stay surveys. First part of it, I'm going to talk a little bit about the types of surveys, and then the most of it will actually be about the most recent stay survey and the actual data that we did. All right, so we'll dive right in with why. So why do we offer employee feedback surveys in general? The first thing that it says up there is we want to know. So this is our fifth year, in 2019 is when we start doing, started doing employee surveys. We've sent out three Q12 surveys. We have done two stay surveys, and our real goal is we generally really want to know. The second thing it says up there is we want to change and improve. And so when, when an organization makes a decision to start surveying, a lot of consultants will tell you, I think pretty much all consultants will tell you, don't ask if you're not ready to do something about it, because otherwise you're basically kind of stirring it up and then just letting it sit there. So you're going to create that, that want and that desire for change, and then you're not really ready to do it. So it's really important for us to make sure that we're ready. And so that was something that we really talked a lot about before doing this. And so we really do want to, want to change. The second thing, or the third thing up there is that we want to see proof of improvement. So when you do a survey, it's good to do a survey multiple times so that you can kind of see that progression. And so the Gallup Q12 survey tool in our consultant actually helps us to see the change each time that we do the survey. The stay survey is an internal, we use SurveyMonkey, so it's my time trying to show and illustrate that, which you'll see today, to try and see what that change is. So this is the, kind of the why behind why we're doing the surveys. A little bit of history, so it's like I said, September of 2019 was our very first survey. We did a lot of training leading up to this with our department heads and with our employees. It was the first time that they were going to be giving feedback like this. We did it again in October of 2020, and then we did it in 2022. And that was an engagement survey from Gallup, and it asked three open-ended questions along 12 statistically proven questions that Gallup came up with, but it's 13 questions total that they asked, but 12 were specific to the employees' engagement, and we used Carlson Dutman to help us through that. In September of 2021, and again in February of just this year, we did a stay survey. And so when we did these, the first two in September of 19 and 2020, we started to hear kind of the rumblings of people wanting to give a little bit more feedback than just those 12 questions. They wanted to give feedback on benefits and compensation and the communication and different policy. So that's when we came up with this stay survey idea and used SurveyMonkey as a tool to try and collect that information. So both of the purposes of these survey were to really look for areas to celebrate and also areas to improve. Since I've worked with Randy, one of the, I don't know if it's his tagline or what, but he says it a lot, is that we want to be the best employer in the Chippa Valley, and so a lot of this really is stemming towards that being our goal, is to be able to achieve that. Here is a list of all the different types of surveys that we do. I'm going to briefly go through the top four there, and then I'm going to spend most of the time on the engagement survey and the stay survey. So the first one of that four there is onboarding. So what we do is we use SurveyMonkey, and we, after an employee's been here for about three or four months, they'll get a survey. It'll ask them different things related to the recruitment process and how it went, how they heard about the position, so that we can make sure that we're sourcing and advertising in the right locations, how the communication process was during the interview and offer, the offer pre-start communication, and then that onboarding process. And onboarding isn't just the first couple weeks, it's months. And one of the reasons that we really focused on this is we saw turnover in the first few years that I was here, really, really in those, those first few months to first couple years. And onboarding, and really focusing on onboarding can help correct some of that, and so that's where we put this survey together and continue to, to look at the data and make tweaks over the years. The data is sent out specifically to department heads, as we have people that onboard to help, help them with their onboarding, and then we also try to illustrate that information to the department heads in kind of summary form over the years as well. So that's the onboarding survey. We do a performance review, and about 50% of the departments, because it's per policy, the department head makes the decision if they would like the employees within their department to do a self-review, and about 50% of them do that. And so we have summary data that we're able to look at that asks those last few questions on that, on that survey. It says biggest accomplishment over the last year, what do they enjoy most over the year, what do they enjoy least, and what additional things can their direct supervisor do. So this is just another touch point that we have where employees can provide us feedback, and we can have that to review. I thought it was worth noting, it's just it was a one-time survey, I think we might have even done it twice over the COVID pandemic, but it was the first time we had done a survey after starting surveys. 2019 was the first time we did the engagement survey, and then over COVID, we wanted to know, are we communicating enough, are we getting enough feedback? And for me, when I really looked at the data and how much response we got, we had 227 responses, 27 of the employees said they prefer not to share their department, but the rest of them were willing to share their department and just give open and honest feedback, and I was really proud of all that feedback. And then I was also proud to watch DOA, watch department heads, Randy really respond to the feedback. I think that the pandemic was hard, but I think it could have been harder had we not had this feedback and the improved communication because of this feedback. So I think that that's why I put it up here, is I just wanted you to have a little bit more data on that survey specifically. And the last short one is just the exit interview, and this is a real common survey that a lot of organizations do. When I started with the county, it was in paper form, we moved to SurveyMonkey. As you see up there, we used to have 20, 25% response rate when it was in paper. We're now up to over 75% response rate when we sent out that survey. Then, one of the HR generals in our office, Kristy, on the last day-ish of employment, it could be the day before, she'll sit down and go through a full benefit kind of review to make sure that they understand how the exit affects their benefits, but then she'll also talk about this survey. She'll ask some questions and try to get some clarity. Our goal is to try and really find out why they're leaving. It's an opportunity, because if they're going to be honest, probably going to be here because they're not here anymore. That's not always the case, sometimes they might hold back simply because they want to return again someday, or they don't want to have a, have anything negative come back, but for the most part, we do get some really good feedback. So we try to summarize this, we use this when I provide turnover data to the county board, which will be the next and the last presentation. We get some data from, from there to, to share with our turnover data as well. All right, this is a summary slide of our engagement and stay surveys. So you'll see the response rate in 2019 for our very first survey was 76%. Then we did another engagement survey with the Q12 survey, it went up a little bit by 78%. Then we did our stay survey, it was the first one where we used SurveyMonkey, and it went down to about 54%. Then we did the Q12 engagement survey again, went back up to 75%, and then it was pretty much the same for the second stay survey we did here in 2024. And then you'll see the, kind of the schedule. Our hope is, is to have them engaged in taking the survey, is to switch it up every other year, because sometimes people get burnt out by surveys. So in 2025, we'll do the Q12 engagement survey, and in 2026, we'll go back to the stay survey, so we'll alternate every other year. On the right side there, you'll see just a short summary of what the difference is between the two. Like I've already shared, the Q12 is 13 rated questions, three open-ended questions. We use Carlson Dutman as our consultant to help us through that. It is an anonymous survey, so the reporting when it comes back requires at least four responses in order for the department, or the way that that is sorted, in order for them to get a report. So if you only have three direct reports, or if you're like Jackie and have two, she doesn't get a report, because she doesn't have enough employees for that survey. When we do the stay survey, it is through SurveyMonkey, so there isn't any requirement, but that doesn't necessarily mean that people are comfortable giving their feedback. So it depends on the department whether or not, if it's, if it's two. She did get her folks taking her survey, but some departments, maybe if there's a small department, they may not feel that comfort. And again, the same purpose that we already talked about is to try and look for areas to improve or areas to celebrate. This is the, these are the questions for the Q12 survey. So this is the Gallup Q12 survey backwards here. These are building block questions. And so you'll see from the bottom up, there's basic needs, types of questions, individual needs, teamwork and growth. So when we worked with our consultant, one of the, kind of the things that, the tips that she shared is if a department has a survey that they maybe have some areas to improve in several of these, and you're just not sure where to begin, you should start at the bottom. You should start with basic needs and make sure that those are there, then work your way up. We did that as an organization as well the first year. We wanted to really focus on making sure that we really hit home the first three. So we created some activities and some, some action items that really focused on those first three to make sure that we were doing those. The next year, we focused on recognition, so there was a lot of things that we tried to do with that area of recognition. So that's where we are at for those. Before I move forward into the stay survey and start going through the specifics of the 2024 stay survey, are there any questions that need to ask in these other types of surveys that we've done? All right. So now, the rest of the presentation is going to be kind of strictly kind of walking through the specifics of the stay survey. It is listed, all this data is listed in summary form, our department heads got their specific information, so as they received, as the data came in, it got pulled into some pivot tables or into, not pivot tables, into some diagrams as well as a spreadsheet, and then I sorted by department. And so all department heads got their specific data that the employees filled out. And so I'm not going to go through, because I will be up here for another hour, and I don't think you want to listen to me talk for an hour, but I could if you needed me to, because I love this, I love this content. I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about this side, but then you can go back and look at the other sides that are similar to this, and it's kind of uses the same methodology of how I came up with doing this. This was very difficult, I remember talking to Randy the first time that I got the information, it was so overwhelming because it was just tons of data and comments. I remember sitting in bed at night just reading through it over several nights, and it's very, it's very taxing, because you, of course, if you're like me, you probably notice all the negative, and you don't notice the positive the first time you read something, and then you force yourself to look at the positives. And so what I ended up doing is taking the data in a spreadsheet, and then I had, I created a cell to the right of all of those comments, and I had put like a tag note. So if it talked about coworkers, I'd write coworker, or if it talked about flexibility, I'd write flexibility, so that I could try to see like what are the trends. And so that's how I got these counts that are up here the first year and the second year. So this last year we did, it was a much easier, because I kind of had this rhythm. And so you'll see that the very first category of comments are any comments that were 20 or more. And then you'll see, A, there, coworkers and/or others at work. What I can tell you is that was the number one comment on this question, what do you like most about your position at Chippa County, and/or what makes you excited about coming to work each day? For the coworker one, it was over 100. So it was, it was significantly the highest rated thing, which was really fun to read. And then there was the other comments, such as challenging work and rewarding public service, provides a strong sense of purpose and meaningfulness, flexibility, work hours, new courthouse hours was talked about quite a bit, telecommuting, the variety of day-to-day work, that you ask employees these difficult questions, and that the county demonstrates a desire to improve or add benefits. The next layer then were the comments that were maybe five to 19 comments, because there was definitely one-offs where somebody might say one or two, you know, something that's very different. But what those were is health insurance and related new benefits, direct supervisor and or overall leadership was a positive comment. They would type the word nothing, or random letters, or a dot that provided a negative comment, because it's required field. So of course, somebody would have to hit something to get, to move forward. Challenging work or stability. So this was the question one. Question two then is what do you like least about your position at Chippa County? And/or what is something you could change if you could? So you'll see here, it's structured the same way, and you can definitely, like I said, I don't want to read through each other side for you. The one thing I'd point out here, the second most common thing that was for this question was typed the word nothing, left blank, or said a positive comment. So when we're asking them, what can we improve, or what should we change, and they're positive or say nothing, I thought that was pretty telling as well, so I thought that was a great thing to see for this question. Question three, name something that you, that you, that could make you more successful in your position. And then, so this question and question four were new this year, and this was by request from a couple department heads, because a lot of times when we ask for this feedback, it is difficult for department heads to see and read the criticisms and the, and the critical nature of some of the comments. And a couple people said, well, aren't we in this together? Which is the whole, we are in this together, and when I did this for the PowerPoint for the presentation, I did a little high school musical thingy, because you know, we're all in this together. But we really are, and so that's why we asked this question, is what can employees do, or what are they willing to do to achieve or obtain what they wrote down in the question before, which is how we can be more successful? What I thought was telling was, you know, about a quarter, 25 to 30% of the feedback was a very proactive quality solution. They gave a solution, a valid answer to whatever it was that they wrote down, that they wanted to be more successful. 25 to 30% of the people said that they will speak up again or ask again, implying that they had already asked for this to be looking at, taking into consideration, hadn't been before. And then half of, almost half of the responses were random letters, a period, the word N/A, nothing, or unsure, or negative feedback. So there were definitely some people that weren't engaging in liking this question. So we'll just keep asking and try to kind of explain why we're asking it as we move forward. I think we really are in this together. It's got to be not just the county changing policy, increasing wages, department heads, you know, really working hard, also our employees, we want them to be in this together with us. All right, so the next several slides, I'm going to, I'm going to first explain how to read the slide, and then again, you can go back and look at these, but what these are, are each of the actual questions that are being rated. So on this slide, you'll see that this is two different questions, so it's asking them to rate the employees within their department, or the employees in other departments that they work with. The other thing on this slide is it's going to compare it from 2024 to 2021, so you'll see the two comparisons. It's also going to have what the ratings were, so it's from very satisfied, dissatisfied, dissatisfied, satisfied, very satisfied, all the way down. So that's what the ratings are for each of the categories. You'll see the grand total for each of them, so in 2021, it was 229 total responses, in 2024, it was 227. And then you'll see that what I tried to do is if I saw something improve or decline, I would note that in red or green. So red would be if it decreased from 2021 to 24, green means that it improved from 2021 to 2024. And if I highlighted the whole grouping, it means that that whole group kind of really did, it did improve this. So you'll see that, that communicate, or the employees in other departments' ratings did go up. That's how you would read these as you walk through them. So here's the next series, you'll see employees within, let's see, I can't read that far, employees in the direct, employees direct supervisor, we did not ask that question the, the year before, so I don't have any comparison up here. Leadership within the department was asked though the year before, and so you'll see that change, and then leadership in other departments. The next series of questions are, you'll see that there's a purple versus black. All the questions up to this point are, what I would say are questions that the department head is the primary person that can make a difference, or leadership can make a difference. Up here, you'll see some in purple, those are where the county is kind of going to make the difference. And so we, as the DOA, really worked and looked at those to try and make sure that we could, we could see those improvements. And so that's where you'll see the difference in those. So you'll see department culture versus county culture, department communication versus the county communication. And then you'll see department policies and procedures, which improved, and then county policies and procedures. So those are the, the different categories. To try and make it easier for employees, we broke it up into three chunks, and so that was the first chunk that they rated, and then we asked them to provide any comments. And so this area, what they did is they said mostly, 150 or more employees said N/A, random letters, or a period, just because it was a required field. Communication was the number one comment, but different types of requests based on the area policies were mentioned a lot, and then specific comments regarding their leadership, because that's what we asked for. The next series of questions, or series of rated areas, was challenging work. Now, blue is what we would identify as something where both the county and the department have, have a say. So opportunity for growth, there's obviously policy and procedures that can help dictate that, but also it's an opportunity for growth within the department, because in my department, I still have an opportunity as a department head to help my employees feel like they can grow. There might be some things I can't do because of policy, so that's why we, we thought that was something that both of us are, are affecting. The impact you have in your job is, was rated, and then advancement opportunities was rated. Nexus technology, this is red, because it did take the biggest hit this year. It was not the lowest rated question, but it definitely did take a hit this year with comments and feedback, and so we did do a good job of trying to poll all the comments and giving it to Andy to be able to look at some of those, and we've definitely talked about some of those in the DOA department as well. I think staffing in your area is probably some of the biggest factor. Help plug that for you there. Physical work conditions, shift and schedule, and then work flexibility, this was really, really positive. Obviously, we've done a lot in the, in the area of telecommuting and flexibility and changing work hours, the Friday change, I think that really impacted the survey results, because we saw a lot of positive here. And then again, some comments, 160 comments, basically just N/A or random letters. There were comments about lack of advancement opportunities, it's probably the most common, and I don't think that's just related to Chippa County. It's, it's almost like temperature from a facility, you hear it no matter where you work. Advancement opportunities is also something that you hear no matter where you work. And then the technology comments. All right, the last kind of grouping of, of, of areas is wellness. Compensation, there is no comparable, because we did not ask this question the year before. It is one of the lowest rated, it is the lowest rated, and it was right after we did the market analysis. So this is probably another one of those that I don't know that will ever have high ratings, but we can still kind of pay attention to the comments. Health insurance was very positive, which was rewarding, since we've done so much work in that area of health insurance and educating, and the positivity of it went up. We did a lot of that education because of the 2021 results, and so obviously, they heard it, they heard it, so that was good. And then other voluntary benefits. And then the last two are PTO holidays and then retirement benefits. All right, then we have the, the feedback again, the comments. So again, the number one comment was just N/A or random letters, some negative statements about wage study results and the process, and the comments on pay in general was, was commented on as most. Issues related to how longevity was applied to staff was also mentioned as well. There were several positive wellness comments, and a couple criticisms, talking about PTO and gym memberships, those types of things, and then dental insurance is our most common negative benefit comment, and it's just high, a high-cost benefit for, for the area. Then I took the same data and I broke, I broke it out by the most positive rated question, so you could see that. So challenging work is the most positive, positive rated question on the survey. Impact you have, work flexibility, shift schedule, and retirement benefits. So those are the top five. You'll see kind of how I calculated it, that I highlighted it there, so that 90 some percent, over 90% of our employees rated it very satisfied or very, or satisfied. Similarly, I did the same exercise in a, with the lowest. And so you'll see, start from the bottom right, compensation is the lowest, departments, communication, advancement opportunity, department culture, and then technology. Those were the lower rated, rated questions. Question 11, when was the last time, if ever, you seriously considered leaving and took steps to leave your position at the county? So keep in mind, this is a stay survey, so we're trying to figure out why are they staying, or potentially if they, they were thinking of leaving, why did they end up staying as well? So this is, this did improve from 2021. So if they said yes to that question, explain why you were considering leaving your position. So they didn't leave, that's why they're here taking the survey, but when they, if they actually said yes, negative comment about the department head, direct supervisor, upper management, comment about pay, workload is too high, overtime, turnover, staffing issues, personnel or family reasons, or stressful work environment related to tasks, coworkers, customers, clients. So those were the five most common answers for that. If you said yes to 11, explain why you changed your mind, like what positive thing happened? Leadership change, that was positive. Positive coworkers outweigh other reasons to leave, wage schedule or a positive pay change. After looking for another job, realized that pay and benefits or flexibility aren't as strong elsewhere, which I always think is good to see what's out there, and hopefully that'll help give you, keep you positive. Loyalty to the customers, clients, and value for what you do here at the county. Change in county board, committee members improved, and then still looking. So those are the most common answers there. Question 14, if someone asks you, describe your department's work environment or culture, how would you describe it? And so these are some of the different things that you can kind of read through on here as a comparison that I didn't, didn't put up on the screen. Last survey, when we had in 2021, there was 139 positive comments for this time, for this section, it was up to 161. So it was 73% were positive versus 66%, so I thought that was positive as well. And the one that I just loved seeing up there is the, below our categories of the most positive comments in order of quantity, you know, great team members. Again, coworkers, just everybody loves who they work with, so that's, you see that a lot throughout the survey, depending on, in all different types of questions. What do you like or dislike about your department's leadership or management style? So these are some areas here to, to review, so below are some more of the negative comments. What I'd like to point out here, which is a really good illustration of why it's important for us to ask for departments, because if we just look at it overall, and we tried to look at what are negative and what's positive, they're in both categories. So how do I know how to help departments? So how do I know how to help department heads if somebody in one department head is a micromanager, but in another area, they love that they don't micromanage? Well, I don't know who to help with what area. Some have good communication, some have poor communication. So it's interesting when we look at the negatives and positives, they're almost the same, just inverted for both areas. So that's why it's important for us to try to figure out who in the most anonymous way that we can. Tell us a story about when you felt particularly energized at work or engaged in your job, what was going on, what made you so excited and energized? This is another one that's just fun to read through. I'm not going to go through all of them today, but please, please take some time to look at those. And then what can the county board, county administrator, and our DOA do better or continue to do well to support you? I'm going to read through each of these. So salary, pay, or market analysis comments for long-term employees, that was one of the number one comments. Ask for them to increase knowledge and understanding of what employees do in each department, and that was referring to the county board. Sometimes to us as well, but primarily the county board. Feedback that leadership needs to be held accountable, improve recognition and retention factors. A positive or encouraging feedback was provided by, felt the county board, county administrator or DOA. Thankful for updating the policies and the new benefits tied to the health plan. Request to add staff due to workload. Continue to do employee engagement surveys, ask more questions on what's going on in the departments and taking action regarding the feedback. Comments about the county board being too political or negative and need to learn a little bit more about departments. Comments about technology or IT-related suggestions or requests, and then comments about the sheriff's department. Keep in mind, this was dogged back in February, some of these issues have been resolved. I know that the longevity bonus has since gone out, so hopefully there's some people that were happier about some of the pay decisions that were made. But those were some of the overall summary comments for that one. All right, so this is a lot of data, and I'm going to try and kind of, again, use my clicker here to illustrate what this is. So the left side is 2024 survey statistics, and the right side is the 2021. So you'll see what just got circled there is the 53.9% is our response rate for 2024 to for the survey. Then I have it organized by department from highest to lowest response rate, so you can see which departments had 100% of their employees take the survey all the way down to zero at the bottom. On the right, you'll see the difference. So for example, IT had two less people, I think that's two, three less people take the survey in 2024 than in 2021. The county clerk had one, and so you'll see that there. You'll see that in 2021, when Randy's survey went out, he said we sent it to department heads and DOA, so he had a summary of all of them in one report. This year, in 2024, we sent a separate survey to department heads and a separate survey to DOA, so he could try to discern if there's different things he needed to do for each of those different groups. And then this year, we had probate separated. They used to be combined with clerk courts office, and we thought maybe they would want that data, but they didn't have anybody take the survey. But that's the department-specific information. Okay, the next thing that clicked was on the bottom of the 2021. It says 55, increased department-specific response rate by 55. So from last year, or from the last time we took it in 2021 to 2024, we had more, 55 more people have specific department information passed on to the departments. And then that whole box there on the right illustrates, which some of it's cut off, is that we actually had a pretty similar response rate. We had 227 people take it in 2024, 229 took it in 2021. However, only 169 of those employees put their department down, and 60 of them did not. And then we did have a glitch with the survey software, which is the part that you can't see. We had, I think it was 160 that actually started the survey, didn't complete it, so we had some survey data, but we didn't have all of it, so it was a little bit hard to kind of look through. But for the most part, we had very similar response rate. All right, a couple more slides, so an overview. So again, our purpose of doing a stay survey is to find out why employees are staying at Chippewa County. What can we continue to do or improve to ensure that they stay? If you did think about leaving, you know, asking them why. And if you thought about leaving and changed your mind, why did you stay? And the purpose for doing that is so leadership can react to the data by increasing communication where needed, identifying any barriers or misinformation, or clarifying things, or making changes. The heart behind this survey is to strengthen communication and improve the work environment. So that's the main reason, so that people don't decide to leave and choose to stay. We also want our employees to continue each year feeling more and more comfortable putting their name out, not name, but putting their department down and taking the survey, because we're hopefully proving, nobody's lost a job since I've worked here because of the survey feedback. It is anonymous, but we all know that some people's writing styles can be identified, and so some people don't want to share that information. But we hope to continue to see that. And we are hoping that our response rates will continue to increase because of that. I talked a little bit about why we require the manager's name and why I think it's really important to have that. And like I shared, some of the questions, it's really the department head that has the most effect. That's not 100%, it's all of us, we're all in this together. There is a significant impact that our department's, department heads or direct supervisors have on the engagement and the desire to stay. You saw that one of the main reasons that people left was their supervisor, and we hear that a lot. So it's important to make sure that our department heads have some of that specific information. And so again, getting department-specific feedback does take a lot of courage. Employees, it requires them to be brave and honest to give that feedback, especially when not positive. It also requires them, I think, to have a finesse in the way that they share their information. Because if it's scathing and really rude, a lot of times, the department heads just kind of roll their eyes themselves and probably don't want to listen to it. So it's trying to teach our employees, too, kind of having a good, positive way of conveying their thoughts. And then managers, it does require them to be humble, open to change. I always tell everybody, read it, go home and cry, come back, read it again, because it is hard to read it that first time. I had a chance to sit down with everybody and talk to them about their results, and some of them are very frustrated. But after you read it a few times, you don't see all the negative, you do see a lot of the positive in there as well. All right, so our action items. Department heads received all department-specific feedback. They received that, I believe, as in April. Depending on the results, we had them meet with me and/or Randy all the way through the spring and summer to discuss the results and reviewing action items. They did have to send all of their action items to Randy by June 15th. Some of them are still working on it and still having those conversations. We have something called the Staff Satisfaction Squad. Jackie's a key role in that, and so they really do a lot of helpful team building, county-wide events. They helped us come up with some recognition ideas, longevity ideas, those types of things because of these surveys. We do a courthouse in service on MLK Day. We did a department scramble in 2024, and we got such positive feedback, and it did come up in this survey, that we're going to do it again in 2025 or something similar. Our goal in HR is to go out and job shadow. Again, we saw that feedback on this survey, that people want to see Randy if possible, they want to see me, they want to see the county board, you know, get involved and understand their departments. So my team and I are trying to get out and job shadow a little bit to kind of show that we do care about what they do and want to understand a little bit about what they do. And then Randy's going to continue to research leadership training options, opportunities, and myself as well for our managers. And then our next survey will go out in February of 2025. Any questions?
Thank you, Tony.
There's a question.
One question. Supervisor Gary.
Thank you. Could we go back to question 17? Line two. Did I understand you to say that they were concerned that the county board did not understand their jobs or what was going on?
There's comments that the county board, and they also equally make comments about DOA or Randy, so, but yes.
Well, as a county board member, that's a concern of mine, because we as board members should know, but if we're not on a particular committee, it can easily get overlooked. So for a point of discussion, should we consider that each committee chairman sometime during the year, not all in one night, give a report of what their committee is about? Would that suffice to solve that question?
I've not talked to these individuals personally, but the kind of feedback I'm getting is they, they're going to want to see us. And it's, sometimes it's realistic, sometimes it's unrealistic. Because what I would say, the couple of times I have had the conversation, if somebody really wants the county board supervisors to come to Human Services, I hear it probably more there than any other department. And I would say, I would understand that request if you're on the Human Services Board. But if you're on, I mean, you guys are busy, you have other different pieces that you're serving, whether it's the highway or another area. So I don't know that it feels realistic that all of you should have to go to learn about the Human Services Department, but...
Well, and we do have committees for that. They're the ones who really contact people and should be on top of it. You've answered my question, thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Tony. And now we'll move on to item two, the financial update. Second quarter.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so this is just going to be the finance update for the first month of the year. So we'll just scoot right on over. So here's for the general fund, the departments I'll talk about. So the things that I look at on these sheets is I'm looking for revenues that are below 50%. It would be in that column, percent collected under revenue, and expenses is greater than 50% under that percent spent column. The first one we'll talk about is county board. You'll see that the spent column has 64.3%. And that's really just because we have annual subscriptions and contracts that are paid at the beginning of the year, so that makes sense. The general county, you'll see that the revenue is like way understated, you'll see. And that is because we receive our state shared revenue from the Department of Revenue in, usually in November. The next one is the county clerk. We always ding poor Jackie. And it's just because the spent column is 86.2%. And that's because we have the annual library allocation that goes out in January. It's 953,000 this year, so that's why. The next one down, I don't have it highlighted, but I wanted to touch on it, was the county treasurer. You're going to see the revenue is a very large number at 235.4%. And that's because we're really getting record rates. With the June rates, we had 5.42% for a return interest rate. Register of deeds, you're going to see that the revenue is at 39.4%. I think this is making sense because of the, it's contingent with, all the revenues are contingent with the housing market and so, and economy, so I think that makes sense. And child support, they're on this report every time, too. It's because their revenues are at 29.7. It's because we receive the state aid quarterly reimbursed. And here's just a recap of what I had just said, and maybe says more information than what I had, but it gives you a quick glimpse. Here are special revenue funds. The first three, public health, ADRC, and human services. We end up getting reimbursement a month later, so that would be normal. Jail assessment, you're going to see that the revenues are at 44.3%. These are a little behind, I would say, than what we would hope to see, but we really have no control on these, because these are the fees that are on the fines that the clerk of courts collects. And luckily, the expenses are pretty much in line with what the revenues are. And land records, that is actually, the revenue is based off of some of the work that the register of deeds office does, so it makes perfect sense that it's all part of the housing marketing economy. Another special revenue fund we'll talk about is sales tax. So as you can see right now, we're doing pretty decent for this year. So remember, there's always a two-month lag of when we receive the revenue. So what we received as of June 30th was really April revenue. And you'll see we have very large year-to-date interest, and 100% of all the expenses were allocated out to the different projects, part of the CIP plan. We have opioid abatement accounts. And here, you'll see a detailed, over on the left-hand side, of all the revenues that we've received for the opioid settlements. And on the right side are the expenses for the different approved projects for 2024. ARPA, all the revenues that are shown right here at this time are just the interest income that we've had on the funds that are in the state investment pool. And our year-to-date expenses are over on the right-hand side, and it's only for 2024 year-to-date. Debt service funds, these are our annual debt payments. And before we do tonight, for the resolution that's coming up, we would have our outstanding principal of $6,880,000. And we have no capital project funds that we're utilizing in 2024. Internal service funds, self-funded health insurance, you're going to see that the revenues are really right on where we would want them to be for half of the year. The shortfall that we're having is in the expenses area, we're at 63.5%. And it's really because we're seeing some large claims come through. And the self-funded liability insurance, you can see that our revenue is only 0.3% because we'll do the insurance allocation. It's done on an annual basis, so. And also, the expenses in the self-funded liability is large because it's paid at the beginning of the year also. And then we have enterprise and trust agency funds. So the land development fund is considered an enterprise fund. We have not sold any properties this year. And then we have the dog license fund, which is normal activity. It will all be paid out at the end of the year. And that is all I have. Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, and please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. We have no general reports, so move on to item eight, business items. One is Resolution 38-24, resolution awarding sale of $3.5 million of general obligation promissory.
Okay, so I'll start out saying that...
Oh, sorry. Procedure, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Look for a second. You have a motion in a second? Now that it's on the floor, we can discuss.
Okay, perfect. So if you recall, at the June county board, I had shared a presentation about the bonding process. And that same night, you actually approved two resolutions that, which authorized us to start the process with issuing the 3.5 million of the notes or bonds. We received the credit opinion from Moody's, and we were able to maintain our AA1 credit rating. And remember, this rating is really important to us for what our interest rate is going to be, very similar to you as from a personal level, you know, you need to have a good credit rating. And a copy of the credit rating is going to be part of Brad's presentation here soon, too. So we are now at the point that the promissory notes or bonds have been sold, and this resolution before you will be the finalization to award these. He'll short, share a short presentation before you look at the resolution, and I'll let Brad take it away.
Thanks. I'll walk through this presentation. So we, the county's note issue was out in the marketplace this morning, and we were soliciting indications of interest from investors nationwide, and we had very good response. So based on that response, we're able to lock in an interest rate of 3.09%. Back when we first presented this in June to the board, the estimated rate was 3.65%. So it's 0.56% lower than today, which, and this is the last step, this will be locked, finalized tonight, 0.56% lower than what was used for planning purposes back in June. That, in dollars, that translates to $91,000. So $91,000 less interest that the county will be paying on this three mil, three and a half million dollar note issue. All of the terms, very successful financing. So all of the terms, and if we could flip to the next page, or is it on here? Sorry. Okay. As a reminder, this was the financing plan that was presented back in June, and everything aligned with exactly what was presented for planning purposes, the exception of the lower interest rates. So really what we're focusing on, the far right-hand column, that column that says combined debt service, that represents the existing obligations of the county, the issue you're considering to award tonight, plus placeholders for hypothetical future financings. And what we're really targeting on that right-hand column is to avoid any peaks or valleys in the debt service budget of the county. So if we can maintain a consistent debt service budget, it's going to be easier for you as elected officials to, to adopt your operating budget, to have a smooth operating budget without having increases or decreases. And we've accomplished that. So the next, the following page, I just want to touch on a few highlights from the rating report from Moody's. Each time the county issues debt, it seeks a bond rating from Moody's Investor Service. The rating here again was affirmed at AA1, that's the second highest rating that Moody's assigns. And you may remember, that was an upgrade a few years ago, I think it was, four years ago, the bond rate was upgraded. So to maintain that AA1 really puts the county with an elite group of issuers throughout the country. Some of the credit strengths are your very strong reserves, these very low leverage, and the growing tax base of the county. We skip ahead just a couple pages. I want to just touch on the scorecard. And the scorecard is, it's a couple more pages up. This card is really Moody's first step in evaluating, evaluating the credit characteristics of the county. And this is the very, part of the rating that's really not subjective. They do some below-the-line adjustments then, based on some more subjective criteria. But what I want to really focus on here is all of the, all of the policies, everything that you can control as elected officials and as policymakers of the, of the county are very highly rated. When you look at financial performance, they look at available fund balance, the liquidity ratio, and you'll see you're scoring in the AAA level for both of those factors. If you look at leverage, that's how much debt you have outstanding, your fixed cost ratio, again, AAA level. It's really the institutional framework, which is an A rating. That means what, what are the rules and regulations that you're operating under that are mandated by the state of Wisconsin that impact the county? Well, you have no direct control of that, and that's rated as an A. And that's the same rating for all counties in Wisconsin, that institutional framework. The economy, you look at your residential income levels, full value for capital, again, very high level, the AA, and then the economic growth at an A. So Moody's puts all of these ratings together into their scorecard. They each have different weightings, and this comes out to say it's a AA1. And that's the same rating that was actually assigned. So there were no below-the-line adjustments that would have lowered this rating to a AA2 or increased it to a AAA. But overall, very strong credit rating. Again, at a 3.09, we met all of the targets that were presented and approved by the board back in June, and we did it at a lower total cost to the county. So very successful issuance tonight. I could go into more detail if you like, or answer questions.
Supervisor.
Thank you. It's nice.
Okay. My pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, then we will call the vote to approve the resolution to award the general obligation notes. Can release? Approval is unanimous. Item two, resolution 39-24, resolution to approve additional CDB funding for Hope Village. Jessica? Let's ask, entertain a motion to approve.
Supervisor. Make that motion.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second to approve the resolution? On the floor to discuss.
Sure. So I don't have a big presentation to present. The resolution that we are requesting is to add $1.5 million to our current regional grant that the Housing Authority administers. The 1.5 million would be for a conversion project for Hope Village that would allow us to convert an existing building into affordable housing. I guess I would open it up to questions, and I can answer more specifically if you had specific questions on the project.
Supervisor Roth.
I'm assuming then, that's an existing office building that's there.
No, so the building that they will convert into affordable housing has not yet been identified. Part of the funds can be used for acquisition, so a portion of the 1.5 will be for acquisition, and then the rest will be for rehabilitation.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Hennig.
Where's the money coming from?
So these are CDBG funds that are available for any county to utilize for a conversion project. So if we don't acquire these funds and bring them under Chippewa County, any county is able to utilize the funds for a conversion project anywhere else in the state.
What's the target? Who, who are, who are the targets for living there?
So 51% would have to be low-income clientele. They would have to maintain affordable housing on 51% of the units.
Has there been any studies on the demographic changes that is going to happen with that achievement that you want to do?
So they would be existing, you know, the need is for individuals already looking for housing in Chippewa County. So these are individuals could be at, at Hope Village, they could be individuals looking for Section 8 help through our program. So these are our current, you know, Chippewa County individuals looking for affordable housing.
So this is mostly single individuals or families?
The, the need that Hope Village is seeing is for one-bedroom or efficiency units. That is definitely an unmet need that they are seeing at Hope Village. So the target is going to be one-bedroom and efficiency units that this conversion project will be for.
After you achieve this and start running out, has anyone looked at the changes that will, may, or possibly happen in the neighborhood that they're in? Have there been any studies or?
Well, we haven't.
Studies anywhere around?
Sure. Yeah, the, the area hasn't been identified where this conversion project will happen. So they could acquire an empty building anywhere throughout Chippewa County that is currently sitting empty, that they are able to acquire and rehab for that 1.5 million. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
So what you're saying is there's been studies on the social impact to whatever neighborhood, because we haven't identified the neighborhood. And you're asking us to, to advance this money without knowing the impacts across the board?
So these are grant funds that someone in Wisconsin, any other county, could utilize for a conversion project. So we're just securing them so our county can use it, so that we can do this project in Chippewa County. If we don't secure those funds to do this project, another county in Wisconsin, or another county could utilize those funds for a conversion project. We're trying to hold them here in Chippewa County so we can identify an empty building that we're able to convert into affordable housing, because we need affordable housing. We need more affordable housing in our county, all over the state. So if we don't secure these funds under our regional grant right now, someone else is going to. Yeah.
So how much time do we have to make this decision?
Well.
And when do you think other people will try to secure the money?
I, I don't know when others would try to secure it. Technically, the reason it has to go under our regional grant is because the period of time for the nonprofit to apply on their own has passed, so now it has to be under the regional grant. That's the only way the grant could be administered. So because that grant is already within the period, and the end of that grant would be the end of '26, to acquire a building and do that rehab, I think it's important that we move forward as quickly as we can to allow enough time for rehab.
And which authority is going to be administering this building?
So the building will be owned by Hope Village. So Chippewa County Housing Authority will administer the grant for Hope Village.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lotz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many units, or is it going to depend on the building?
It, it is going to depend on the building that is acquired.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gutten.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have any data on, I, I know that we have a housing need, and specifically for low-income folks, folks that are unhoused. I don't know if you have any of that data or statistics, and it's fine if you don't. But I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, when, when CDBG funds are available as what you're asking for us to approve, that's really a help and a support to the constituents of whom we have a responsibility to, for Housing First Initiative, that typically will stabilize. And even though we don't have the specific study, studies, what neighborhood, where they're going, or what have you, my understanding at least is that typically we'll see positive outcomes because we stabilize a mission that has experienced a lot of instability.
Right.
So I.
Absolutely. You know, just based on the program that we run through our office, of course, Section 8, I can tell you we have a very large waitlist, and that's just the Chippewa County preference is, is over 100. And so those are people waiting to get that needed help for housing. Hope Village is, from what I understand, full. And, and I don't know if you guys have a waitlist at, at Hope Village typically?
Yeah, we do have a waitlist. We currently actually have a couple of houses that are available, just because we had households move out.
Okay.
In the last week. So, yes, we have a waitlist. And oftentimes, and we're building some affordable housing, and it's on our property up on the northeast corner of Chippewa Falls. But what we're finding is for those folks that are elderly and that are disabled and single, they have a very hard time finding affordable housing. Most of the affordable units are upstairs units in some older buildings. And the folks that we've been helping need something on the lower level. So the buildings that we're looking at will be lower-level buildings, entrances. So we can't really discuss what property we're going to buy, because we're working on three or four properties. But we're working on a couple of motels. We're working with HSHS on a building that they own. So these are buildings currently that house people for a short period of time, as a motel would, but wouldn't be considered long-term affordable housing. So it's not that we're bringing new people into the community. Those people are already here, so.
Supervisor Bomar.
My question's been answered. Thank you.
Supervisor Camp.
Is any criminals or ex-criminals, I know there's a motel somewhere where I live out there, they put ex-crimics or people that just get out of jail or prison in these places? Is that the type of people we'll be bringing in?
No, the Department of Corrections uses a certain hotel in the area for that, and they own some property near that hotel. But that's not what we're working with, Jessica, and the Chippewa County Housing Authority. I'm not sure how many months long your waiting list is, but it's usually several months long. But we're trying to help folks that are, that have access to housing assistance, find properties. And part of the situation, I think you're aware, that the Romice Apartments, just those 30-plus units, well, those people are looking for housing. We've had a couple of mobile home courts in the area close in the last two years. The Chippewa Falls shoe factory apartments are just about to get out of their 20-year period where they have to accept low-income housing. So they'll be able to go to full market rate in 2025. So currently, there's a real shortage of affordable housing in Chippewa County, and it's not getting better, it's getting worse because of those situations. So we're working with Chippewa County residents, not people from outside of the county. And we're looking at, we're looking at what's called single-room occupancy, which would be what Jessica had described.
But it wouldn't ever get used for one of those programs where it would be?
We would have no need to use it for that program. There's such a huge waitlist of others.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. I'm wondering for, speaking to the demographics within Chippewa County, are there various areas that you're targeting? It's obviously not just Chippewa Falls. If it's Chippewa County, then are you, like, certain areas around the county?
I actually believe it is just Chippewa Falls that the properties you're.
The properties that we're currently looking at are all in Chippewa Falls.
They are. Okay.
For the conversion project, yeah.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't be looking at other communities within the county for that? Is that, and, and I ask that based on, is that based on the waitlist, the demographics that you have of the waitlist of where people reside, or any jobs they have, or family, or things like that, or?
And I, I don't know if, I would say, I would say yes, most of the need, you know, does lie in Chippewa Falls. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Most of the folks in Hope Village houses are Chippewa Falls citizens. We sometimes see some people from Cornell or Bloomberg or, you know, outline areas. But the biggest need for affordable housing is right in the city.
You kind of alluded to this, I think, in, in an earlier answer. So assuming you receive the funds you're, you're looking for, you've got a timeline to use it by the end of '26?
Right. So it's going to align with our current CDBG rehab grant, which is, yeah, would be the end of '26. So that would be for Hope Village to acquire, and then rehabilitation.
Should those funds be more than enough, say, if you only really needed 1.3 million, you've got one and a half million, what happens to the rest of that money? Does that have to be given back?
We wouldn't advance the funds until we're paying it out for the project, so it wouldn't be utilized. And that can happen with the rehabilit, rehabilitation grant, depending on when the project happens, when the draw requests come in. There are times where, you know, you can't utilize every last penny based on the timeframe.
What, if, if the project ends up requiring more than this amount?
We, we would raise that extra money.
So they would fundraise for those.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hennig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Were the demographics of the male, female in your waiting list?
I would.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't be looking at other communities within the county for that? Is that, and I ask that based on, is that based on the waitlist? The demographics that you have of the waitlist of where people reside or any jobs they have or family or things like that, or?
And I don't know if, I would say, I would say yes, most of the need, you know, does lie in Chippewa Falls. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Most of the folks in Hope Village houses are Chippewa Falls citizens. We sometimes see some people from Cornell or Bloomberg or, you know, outline areas. But the biggest need for affordable housing is right in the city.
You kind of alluded to this, I think, in an earlier answer. So assuming you receive the funds you're looking for, you've got a timeline to use it by the end of '26?
Right, so it's going to align with our current CDBG rehab grant, which is, yeah, would be the end of '26. So that would be for Hope Village to acquire and then rehabilitation.
Should those funds be more than enough? Say if you only really needed 1.3 million, you've got 1.5 million, what happens to the rest of that money? Does that have to be given back?
We wouldn't advance the funds until we're paying it out for the project, so it wouldn't be utilized. And that can happen with the rehabilitation grant, depending on when the project happens. When the draw requests come in, there are times where, you know, you can't utilize every last penny based on the timeframe.
What if the project ends up requiring more than this amount?
We would raise that extra money.
So they would fundraise for those.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hennig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What are the demographics of the male, female in your waiting list?
I would say that most of the demographics in our waitlist are single mothers with children. If we're talking about just single men and women, it's probably 60% women, 40% men.
And how many vets are on that list?
We have housed in the last eight years, I believe, five vets.
So there's not many vets on the waiting list currently?
Well, yeah, and part of the reason for that is Klein Hall exists here in Chippewa County, out at the northern center. So they house male veterans who are single, but they can't house veterans that are women or families. So we have a house that the Olson Kaufman BFW, you know, Claire raised funds for, which is our vet house. So we do keep that and save that as often as we can to house a veteran.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. Based off the Shoe Factory comment, I guess about the 20-year coming up or whatever, how long are we going to keep this as a low-income?
So this would have the same affordability period?
20 years. Is there a way to extend that indefinitely or?
They're either 15 or 20 years. We're a nonprofit, so we would just extend that. We're the person who bought the Shoe Factory, the, you know, private. So for them to be able to leave that period and start charging market rates, especially by the park.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Soss.
I think what Hope Village is doing is a necessity to this community just because we also got to look at employers who lose employees because if they lose their house because rent gets jacked up, they end up not being able to find another place to live. And Hope Village has offered some of my previous employees places to stay for a limited time while they relocate. And when therefore you lose that employee because they move out of the county, they move out of this area because there's no housing. So, I mean, it's kind of a necessity for employers to have their service here.
Absolutely. And to speak on that behalf, with them being able to stay at Hope Village and stay local, they get that preference of Chippewa County when they do apply for the Section 8 program to get on our waitlist. And so we do have a preference for Chippewa County. So if they're able to stay at Hope Village and they want to stay in our community, that helps them to get on the Section 8 program, apply and get that preference for the waitlist with us as well.
Okay. Any more questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, we will call the vote on the resolution to approve this G funding. Release. Yeah, the funding has been approved. Thank you. Onto the next. The next five ordinances have similar things in common. And how we'd like to do this, each one of them, we would like someone to make a motion to waive the second reading, and then to make a, then we'll have another motion to approve the ordinance. We'll do that for each one of them, then we'll discuss what they are. So the first ordinance is ordinance 12-24. And I'd seek a motion to approve, and then we'll have an explanation of that, which should cover the other ordinances as well. Entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Seek a motion.
No.
Sorry, a motion to suspend the rules, first of all. Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules.
Some motion?
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to suspend the second reading. Any discussion? We will take a vote on that then.
Nope, wait, stop. Wrong one. Alright, here you go.
Ball 24. Okay, can release? Okay, that has been approved. Now entertain a motion to approve ordinance 12-24.
Later, so moves.
Move in a second.
So you have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance, and now we get an explanation.
Okay. I just got multiple things going on here. So as you may recall, the, at the August Board meeting, the board considered and approved an ordinance amendment to Section 2-3, which essentially eliminated the Chippewa Herald as the designated newspaper for purposes of publishing legal notices. And it also allowed then legal notices to be posted on the county's website and then in one public place, which is the Public Bolton Board down on First Floor. So these five ordinance amendments that you have in front of you tonight, the purpose of those five amendments is to align those chapters, their legal notice provisions with the notice provision in Section 2-3, so that they'll be able to publish or post their notices on the website and in the public place. So the first one is with regards to Section 42-6, and that's for law enforcement that has to deal with abandoned, disposal of abandoned property and publishing notice for that. So unless anyone has any specific questions about that, it just aligns the language with Section 2-3.
Any questions at all on that?
Quick grammatical question on Section E. We start with any person shall be entitled to possession of his property. Shouldn't it be their property?
His or her or their. The plural means the singular male means female. It's, we have a provision in the ordinances that allows for that. So even if it does say that, it means both or them as well.
Just assume some kind of language that may not be appropriate. I'm just, just wondering what the standard is. So if there is a standard, then I can accept that.
The ordinances do say no matter what you use, it's both sexes and plural, so.
Any more questions? If not, we will call the vote to approve Resolution 39-24. Okay, can release?
Restroom.
Restroom.
Ordinance 12-24 is approved. And we'll move on to ordinance 13-24. Again, I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Later, so moves. Wait a second reading.
Peterson, second.
We have a motion in a second to waive the second reading. Any discussion? We will take the vote. Supervisor Kelly. Apparently didn't get. Okay, release. Okay, we have waived the second reading. Now we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 13-24.
Lots will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any further explanation on this? You know, Todd can.
Again, just to align the notice provisions, this is in Chapter 30, Environment. I believe it's in the Non-Metalic Mining Ordinance.
Any further questions? Then we will call the vote on ordinance 13-24. Okay, ordinance 13-24 is approved. And repeat again with ordinance 14-24, entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Sidesteps will make the motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? We will vote on waiving the second reading. Okay, can release? Okay, we have waived the second reading. Now we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 14-24.
Sidesteps will make that motion.
Bergeron, seconds.
Motion in a second for approval.
Again, this is the floodplain ordinance. Waiving the, waiving the second reading means a lot to Doug because he has several public hearings he has to hold, and the sooner he can post on the website, the more money he can save, so.
Any further questions? And we'll call the vote then for ordinance 14-24. Okay, can release? Okay, ordinance 14-24 is approved. Onto ordinance 15-24. Again, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the second reading.
Bergeron makes that motion.
Last will second.
Okay, we have a motion in seconds.
It was a second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote to suspend the second reading. Okay, can release? Okay, there. Second reading is suspended. Now we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 15-24.
Sidesteps will make that motion. Kirby will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance 15-24.
Again, this is the flood, or the shoreline ordinance?
Yeah, shoreline.
Shoreland ordinance.
Any questions on this one? If not, we will call the vote to approve ordinance 15-24. Release? Okay, ordinance 15-24 is approved. Item 7 is ordinance 16-24. Entertain a motion to suspend the second reading on that one.
Later, I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the second reading. Any further discussion on this? Not, we will take the vote to suspend the second reading. Can release the vote? Second reading is suspended. And entertain a motion to approve ordinance 16-24.
Bomar moves. Ten seconds.
We have a motion in a second.
This is the zone ordinance.
Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, we will call the vote to approve ordinance 16-24. Okay, can release? Ordinance 16-24 is approved. Become very efficient with practice here. Okay, county board chair appointments, there are none. Item 10, the county administrator appointments, the county administrator appointment for the local emergency planning committee. Any questions on this or comments?
Do you need a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah, need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve appointments.
Lots will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the appointments. Now, any questions or discussion? Okay. If not, we will call the vote to approve the appointments as listed. Can release? The appointments are approved. Item 11 is agenda items for future consideration. Communicate if you have anything on your mind or want to. Onto item 12.
Erickson will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. We have a second.
Vote.
So let's take the vote before you leave.
Oh, I have to vote one more time?
One more time.
One last, last time.
People voting. Take it for him. Rocky.
I'm calling you on this.
One more time.
Alright. Well, thank you.